So let's go ahead and jump in. The agenda is a little bit informal, but I figured what the election task forces, there's a couple of things we could do. Really wanted to discuss the board input that we received on Tuesday and then talk a little bit about next steps sort of coming out of that and where we should go. And then I think Ethan from PSU is going to be joining us shortly.
He will be here, yep.
Okay, and he'll have his computer and maps. So if there are any additional questions about the maps, I know there were some questions about residency and then options A and B. And I think really, well, let's dive into the board input and then I think that leads us a little bit to next steps. Really quickly, is there any public testimony signed up for today? Okay, we're gonna do it at the end anyway, but that's good to know. So going back to my notes and sorry, didn't have a little bit more time to write things up before. And there's no new materials for today, so it's all still the other materials. I think what I heard from the board, but I'm curious what you both heard, you and Julia, is skepticism about changing the way that we do elections in PPS for school board. I didn't hear a whole lot of input around options A or B. I think a little bit, the people who spoke up said they kind of thought B, which again aligns our zones a little bit more with high school boundaries, made some sense. Not a lot of strong views there, but it did sound like some relatively strong views on not making major changes to the way we do elections. I did hear a little bit of tangential opinions about some other types of changes that I think we want to keep on the table, but just on a medium, things like campaign finance potentially as an issue, voting rights and who gets to vote as a potential issue. And again, I'd like to circle back to that, but I'd like to circle back to that after we figure out what we're doing with the census issues. So I do that as a future meeting for this task force to talk about how to address those. But I think there is potential interest in going down that road. Did you all hear similar perspectives? I specifically wrote down, actually, Herman skeptical, Michelle skeptical, Gary wants to study, is interested in campaign finance, Haley cares about all kids. I don't know what that knows. Amy interested in campaign.
Not just one of her songs.
I know. Oh, that's right, that was it. It was about caring about all kids in this group, thanks. Amy was interested in campaign finance limits. And then Jackson was interested in full voting rights for student reps. And Julia, somehow I have no comments from you, so I just missed it.
Yeah, you want to go on the comments?
Yeah, your comments and also your kick off on the rest of the board's.
I think that was a pretty accurate representation. I mean, I was more in a mis-listened mode. Actually, the issue with the gun with the high school boundaries is they all may change. And it's not great how people think of where they live, not everybody. So that's my first piece. And then the second piece, just because over the last 20 years, I've been recruiting candidates to run for the school board. And I really appreciated hearing Herman's point of view about that. Lots of candidates who have never ended up on the school board because they decided not to run was just like, it's too daunting for a, to run citywide and not get paid and you have to run a campaign. So I think I want to just like hold that of all people who said like, I'd love to serve, but I just, it's the campaign thing I can't do, like I can't. And I don't know if that's why you tend to get more people with older kids who run for the board because then it becomes more manageable just for the board. So I guess I'm interested in maybe like going a couple of layers out in terms of hearing from other people because I'm maybe hearing from some other groups that I like, I call to ask like, hey, do you have any candidates? People who might be running, like when you don't have, be ready to see. So. And I don't have a super strong point of view.
And I was just gonna add, I was thinking about this over kind of the weekend, about reaching out to like other groups like a merge and other groups to see kind of their perspective on it. I think it's, at least for me, never run a campaign or been kind of involved in that level. So just kind of hearing other perspectives, other groups who've worked, especially for candidates who are, have historically not the same position.
Like for example, in outer southeast, and this is how I ended up running because like I talked to so many people in outer southeast and I talked to Apollon and it just wasn't a doable proposition for a lot of people to put their life on hold and run. I guess the other thing on campaign finance, I think something we should keep in mind is like the first time I ran, and Liz, you'll tell me if I'm like, can't say something. I don't know if this is okay to say, but the first time I ran.
Like, well, don't tell you say it. I just.
Cut me off.
Okay.
Like getting to the edge. The first time I ran, I raised more money than anybody had ever run, had ever raised. It was like $50,000, which now does not, but that was 20 years ago. And it was the same year that Jim Franciscone raised like a million dollars. Everybody was like, wow, that's a lot of money. And I looked at it and it was like, hey, we actually have the same number of constituents we're trying to reach. And like, you know, $50,000, it's a lot for a volunteer position, but realistically, just the number of voters you have, it then just becomes a little bit of a quack sheet if you don't raise money. So I think we need to be thoughtful, like legislative races, which are, the districts are smaller than, even the senate, the senate seats are smaller than what the zones that board members have to run in. And yet, you know, they, most of them raise like more money. And the natural thing you do is if you don't raise money, you do more door to door. And that's just like not possible. And besides, it's for a volunteer seat, so.
So what's your takeaway?
My takeaway is, you know, I'm not sure, the system is broken. This is, well, this is also why like I do, and I've been splitting the baby with their like, some sort of like hybrid piece, because I do think that like running from a zone makes it suddenly more manageable, makes it more manageable to like knock on doors. And because you have fewer constituents and you have to raise less money. And it's just as smaller than like, hey, you're running just like the mayor or somebody from city council with the whole city. So that is, I don't have a super strong, I say, I kind of live in a hybrid because it seemed like the best of both, like you have some, a couple of people on the board with the citywide, and then you have also some zone, which makes it a much more doable race to run.
AMST does that too. They have song, but then they have that large first.
AMST?
Yeah.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, yeah, they have two, I think it's two that large numbers. And this is a complex issue, I think, because, you know, when we look at how being work, how it is now, and then you look at the makeup, well, the city council now, it's like, do you need to change, not need to change? One big thing that I did hear from focus to money piece, right? I know we don't have any control over what's like getting paid as board members. But the money piece is not so much as how much they need to raise to run up versus being able to have some kind of some why they're doing their volunteer piece, right? Because if you look at, you know, certain campaigns, like even though we raised, we raised some money, we really didn't have to, right? At least for my campaign, I really didn't have to raise. I literally, like a month, month and a half after I announced, I literally stopped taking donations because I didn't need it. And so I think, and I do see the benefit, I do like the benefit of getting out there to the broader community because of the way it's set up now. And I mentioned this at the board meeting, you know, the dynamics of the city is changing. So you think like you have concentrations of, right? And these, you know, everybody's starting out, so. Not here.
Michelle going.
Because the dynamic has changed, I think, has made, this is just one opinion about having a nation citywide, then you're able to reach more, more of your focus. So that fits for us. And also, you know, when I look at how we should be here at PPS, right? By running citywide, you're really encompassing all of our kids, all their districts and all their schools at their hand, right? And that's, so it's like, even though you represent a zone, you're still responsible to everyone else who's going for you as well, right? So I look at that too. So I think like I said, I think it's, because that is just really complex. I think it's be hard to say, okay, we should just focus on this piece right now as far. Like the zone change piece, I don't think that's going to be a big deal. We just do it to where it makes sense. Put here and everybody have representation to their zones. I think the bigger issue is if we do zone, it'll be citywide or the only piece. I think that needs to come with more comprehensive, I won't say reform, but some more comprehensive changes to that. We start talking about doing this by zone of people in citywide. I think those things should be happening, I wasn't parallel, you know? Because it is a big factor for people who are on the volunteer board or under forming divisions to be able to be age-adept efficiently, right? So I think we have to look at all that at the same time. So that's kind of where I'm at still on that. I have to pop this on both of people to give that to me and kind of their thoughts on. But that's just kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, I am. Yeah, I think in terms of how we move forward, it's kind of interesting. I mean, on a personal level, I mean, Julie, I agree with a lot of, you know, sort of what we put out there, easier to recruit candidates, easier to run. You can have a more robust, you know, pool every time, you know, which would be good. You know, I don't like the fact that, you know, our, you know, the system we have is so good in historic and systemic racism. And yet I was really swayed by the argument that, you know, it's a silver lining of gentrification now, that, you know, the whole idea of going to zones is that if you had concentrations, then those zones could elect, you know, board members of color to the board. You now disperse that, which, you know, you look at the population of the last 20, I wish Ethan was here, he could walk us through all of this, right?
Be during five.
Yeah, in terms of just where, you know, what's happened there. But, you know, it's been a really dramatic shift. And so in some ways, the argument for this 20 years ago might have been much stronger than the argument today. And then that kind of feeds into Herman's argument, which is that, you know, if our black population, our Latino population, you know, Pacific Islander populations are spread throughout the city, throughout the, you know, the district, then, and actually, we would be limiting their ability to vote for, you know, you know, candidates who they might want to vote for, you know, otherwise in an end war election. I also think, what was the other thing?
There are like three pretty diverse, I mean, diverse districts. And then under either scenario, I mean, it's, it's interesting looking at that, just to break down that.
Yeah, I'd have to go back, although I also think it's, I mean, this is, I always put in a little bit of a plug for the West Side because, you know, it is more diverse than people think it is, right? When you sort of look at, you know, at zones and gets a little more diverse under both options A and B, both, you know, in my district, but not, not as much as some of these side zones. I think the other thing is that, you know, and this is where it does get a little complicated. And this has been coming up from the very beginning around, you know, do you represent the city, do you represent your zone? We clearly represent the city because we get elected by the city, even though we might be a voice for our zone, you know, where we are now. You know, I mean, that always has been, as we've been talking about it, a potential downside of going to some elections is, you know, does it become more like, well, I'm elected by my zone, I represent that zone, that's where I want to focus? So, you know, would I care as much about southeast boundary, you know, if those aren't my constituents anymore? Well, there are my constituents right now, under a different system, they wouldn't be. So I think all those are complicated. Here's what I'm going to propose, because I'm sort of a, you know, I want to get to a concrete policy. I don't, given where the board was, I mean, I heard a majority of the board was skeptical of moving forward right now, which makes me think that what I would propose as a task force, that we focus on, you know, the apportionment issue that we have to do coming out of the census.
District.
You know, we've got to choose options A or B or come up with another option C that we want to direct PIS to do. And that we focus on bringing that back to the board relatively. Because I don't think we're going to get, all these other issues are complicated and I don't think we're going to be able to get that done by June or July, which is what we do for 2023. So if we just accept that we're not making changes to the way we vote in 2023, with the exception of the apportionment, these other issues can be on the agenda for 2025. And if, you know, if the board changes its mind, that builds in a little bit of time to go back and look at a hybrid system. The other issues I think we're going to be looking at, Liz, just from a legal perspective, Amy said, we could do campaign finance right away. I don't want to put you on the spot because I didn't ask you this before. And I don't think we can though, in Oregon, unless, unless I'm mistaken about the changes. I know there have been a lot of changes in campaign finance, but I think we still, under our constitution, can't restrict donations.
That's my general understanding and I'm not going to confirm that. So we should run that to ground and make sure that that is my.
Let's, let's.
I don't know if that, well, my county does, I forget. Well, my county has a $500,000.
So I, I don't know about Monmouth County. I know the city of Portland does if you opt in.
Opt in, they'll opt in.
Well, the county does too, because.
But I thought that, I thought one of the county ballot measures got thrown out.
But is it, but is it, but so, I mean, when I look at the city piece, right? Is there something we could do for someone to opt in to these level? At least around the campaign piece, right?
So, so yes, and again, I put that in a, because it's going to take a while. So if we wanted to do something similar to what the city did and develop a program that you can opt into and then self limit, but I think you can still, you can run as a billionaire in the city and spend.
Right, right, yeah. I don't think that's any going to get, I don't think, I don't know, I don't know any election period that, you know, someone who just got the money can't do what they want to do.
Well, there are some states, well, you're right, you're right. It's the donations.
Right, so I think it's more because of providing another vehicle for people to be able to access. So first is trying to let me know who's, if somebody there wanted to come and run, there's nothing that, there's no law up here that's saying that you're going to be spending so much, you know that. So at the, at the very least, if we're looking at trying to help out or help, you know, help push that piece somehow. Then, you know, when I look at the zoning versus the city piece, then I think it's a lot less, I think that conversation gets a lot clearer because you're saying, if you do run citywide, but you have an opt-in, or you have some kind of help to help be paid some time at some point. Then I think if we can figure out something like that, then that would make that another conversation.
And I just want to be, are you okay putting that on a medium term timeframe?
Yeah, 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 you don't, you don't have to be too.
Don't make sure we weren't trying to do that.
Unless it can get done today or something, I mean, if not, then.
Well, see, Pittsburgh's not doing a whole lot right now.
Yeah, it's a daily, to me.
Because it is, it is complicated and expensive. And in principle, I'm with you. I think the challenge is going to be, I mean, I, yeah, I helped.
It's complicated, like small donor packs, I mean, you know, who are some of the bigger funders now recently? So it's very hard to.
I guess I just, I'm thinking, I'm thinking too simplistic, right? Well, the city has something already. So I don't know how difficult would it be for us to kind of mirror something like.
To adopt, yeah. No, I guess what I would say.
We don't got to reinvent the wheel.
Right, no, I was involved in the first, I helped, I helped craft the first one that got, that got overturned by the voters before they came back again. But it is, it's complicated and expensive. I think you're right, now that someone's done it. And the real question, because there's all kinds of verification involved and I think that's where it gets tricky. Right now, the poll editor verifies all the candidates in terms of being qualified, you know, independent signatures, all those things. Because the rules around it, making sure people are complying with them, there's just a lot there. I think the other, the other question is going to be the city. I can't remember, the original one cost about a million dollars a year. I don't know what this one costs now with the candidates, we can easily find out. I think that's going to be politically, the challenge is, are we willing to spend school loser funds on campaigns? And I think what the bar that we have to do there is, is be making a case that the public good is what's certainly there. And I think there's a case to be made there, but that is going to involve a lot of negotiation. And frankly, it would be a little bit better if that was coming from an outside group. Because if it's people on the school board saying, boy, I sure wish you would give me money to run my next campaign, that looks bad.
How do you think that would orient you?
It doesn't look great. But if there are outside good government groups that say, look, this will get, again, more people, more working class people, you know, more people of color to run because all of a sudden the barriers are a lot tougher. And as a result, we'll have a more diverse represented school board. This is our.
Now, what, I don't know, but why is the issue with teachers being on the board or having some kind of a case of teachers on the board?
You can't be an employee of the district to serve on the board.
Yeah, and I think that's true, that's true of every government. So I could be a, I could be a metro counselor and also be in a metro jail.
And we're not going to test this, though, we're always talking about how women education, right? And we don't know the education piece. Well, how do we get that, that level of expertise on a board that I would think would need that expertise?
Oh, a teacher that had retired would run. Yeah.
Yeah, the superintendent, I mean, they're all this.
Steve, yeah. Steve Beal was a teacher, right?
Was David in mind? I guess maybe with the other directors, he has to go on the first and then an employee.
And then an employee, David was, yeah. But there have been, there have been teachers on the board.
Before.
Yeah. Okay, so, and then Ethan, right?
Yes.
Hi, great, we're gonna, we're gonna come to you in just a second. I think in terms of, so it sounds like, I just want to make sure that everyone's in agreement, we need to focus on options A or B and/or if there's, if there's another one, do you want to throw on the table? And that's what we're going to do in the short term. And then, and then we will start looking at the timeline and process for some of these bigger questions. Those will not be a 2023 election, those will be a 2025 at the earliest election. My hearing.
So just like, not complicating, this is not argumentative. So if we didn't do the zones, we could run the risk of, of the, of the challenge.
Yes.
Potentially.
Yes, and that.
You would still have the risk of the challenging if you didn't.
Right, so actually, Liz, this is a.
Or mess of a.
Yeah.
What is, what is it they want us to do? And what are they trying to do that in that?
I don't, I think I should send you, it's a cloud.
Yeah, well, actually, let me tee this up for you just for a second because Liz and I were having this exact conversation. Because the board went, I just, I expected there would be a little bit more like, let's move towards, towards zones, there wasn't. And so then that raised the question for me of what is our legal risk? Because this, this statute essentially said, if you've got these at-large systems, we're going to create a wave of people to sue you over that, over that system and lack of representation. So there's a lot of complicated legal analysis and I don't think we want to get into that necessarily at this meeting. But do you want to talk just, and I think, I think, I think what we should do is send some of that out to the board.
Yeah, I think it's time to process the, how it's laid out. To my knowledge, it hasn't been tested yet. So it hasn't been put into use and trotted out since it was passed. It, it allows for a challenge that is, there are several factors that Portland would look to. They're largely data-driven, I think it's pretty high-level data analysis about how certain populations are reflected, how that's measured. And you could try to mimic it as close as you wanted to get in creating a new zone structure. And you could still get sued for that one. Or two years later, the population shifts and it no longer satisfied, but did in your first instance. I mean, it's, it, so I, I think you want to think about how you, how you want to structure school board member elections. I'm not sure you can pay satisfying that statute with assurance that it won't cause you to get sued. I think the more thoughtful you are, the more you engage the community and the more you're transparent about the process of you to take that on. Yeah, so they, I mean, that, that may deter someone from suing you, but it is not a guarantee within the short term for a state, state of laws.
So just in light of that, Andrew, I'm, I'm wondering whether at a minimum we need to have just a little bit broader conversation than we've had so far with a, just on, you know, I don't know, the stakeholders in the district of, do people have a point of view? And whether that puts us in a stronger position if we do decide to just leave it as it is with a, well, that was kind of just the seven people on the board's point of view versus. Wait, with more people. And just a question, I don't, I don't know if that helps you, but it seems like it may. Because, I mean, the thing that we all now have is we're all incumbents, which is an advantage. I mean, if, if everybody is going to run again, now that's not the case. But you have an advantage of incumbency, you have some main ID, you know, you have relationships. And so, you know, and this is, and like I say, I really appreciated the conversation because I took it from a different perspective from having talked to people who have been trying to convince to run, which I thought, so I thought the board conversation was valuable and I have a different perspective now. But I'm wondering if it's also like, could be viewed by somebody, by others as like, well, those are incumbents, those are people who've gone through the system. Who else do they engage?
Yes, but I guess I want to sort of, it's a proposal to, I guess, one, who, who are we engaging? And then, and is the idea to engage them with the possibility of coming back to the board and still trying to make changes for the 2023 election? Because honestly, where I'm headed with this is trying to take that off the table. Because again, if the board, if the majority of the board had said, do this, there was a path, right? There was a path, it's very fast, but between now and June, or I guess July, maybe, now in July, you know, we could do a lot of engagement, you know, sort of figure out what it's going to look like and put a proposal to Monmouth County by July. I think without board support, the idea of doing that engagement, coming back to the board, building the board support and doing all that by July seems insurmountable. Or maybe I should say just.
Like not the right priority for what we've got is.
Thank you, that's a much better way to say it.
And without the data, I'm not sure you know what problem you're trying to solve. If you're trying to, if you're trying to satisfy the statute. And so I think you would need to get some pretty sophisticated data analysis to understand how these voting systems are working, how it's structured and what it's structured through. It doesn't, and I'm not an expert in it, but it doesn't, it seems to me like it requires some science as well.
It's sort of almost like doing a disparity study, right? You can do, you can do race-based policies if you've done a disparity study showing that there's been discrimination, sort of not in school zone right now, I'm sort of in, you know, but, but you can't do race-based policies without that disparity study. You're sort of saying, without the data breakdown of showing whether there really has been a positive or negative impact, it would be difficult to.
He's unable to get elected, right? And, you know, there are voting rights cases have done it. I mean, there's a methodology for doing that in various cases across the country. So statutes need, the thinking about how to assess, you know, how voting systems are working is not. But I, but I think it would be hard for me to imagine how you would move, if you're, again, if you're trying to satisfy the statutory test to reduce risk and move back to the question, I think you'd have to have. And you could change the zones without that, right? I mean, there's the, there's a path to satisfy H B thirty one, and there's the path to just change the voting systems without that.
Yeah, maybe I'm missing something. But for example, the, what you said was like, our first priority should be like, let's get aligned with what we need to do for the, like, the equal zones sizes. So you do that. But what's, what's to stop to say, like, that's step one. I mean, regardless of, regardless of what step two is, that's the step one we're going to take. And then step two is just having, like, is there a reason why you couldn't have that other conversation gone, okay, as a step two versus, because you still have got your zones because we've already said, like, you're running for a zone, but it seems like we don't, you don't have to rule it, you don't have to rule it out in order to do the things, right?
Yes, I agreed, we don't have to rule it out. I think you have to rule it out for 2023. I think you have to rule it out for 2023. And I guess that's what I want to make sure.
Okay.
And then that's what I was sort of trying to say. I think we can come back and have a conversation, and you're right, maybe after going through this and talking to other people, some board members say, hey, no, I'm going to rethink that a little bit. But I don't think we can do that by July. And I guess that's really what I'm, so yes, I should have been more clear. When I say step one, I'm thinking, do the reapportionment work for the 2023 election that we have to do, get it done, boom, check. Then come back and say, let's have these larger conversations. Yeah, and Monoma County, it's their deadline, which is driving that, which I get.
Yeah, and I think then you can also talk about some of these other issues. I say, I've been recruiting school board candidates, like, the vast majority unsuccessfully. Because it's just, it's just too much. I mean, people who have a job, and if you don't, if you can afford not to have a full-time job, then you're in a much better position to run. Or if you luck out, we can contest in the race.
But then that's our representative community.
I mean, I've had so many people tell me, no, and it's, it's, it's not about the serving, because people are like, oh my god, I worked, you know, to do that. And they'd be great, they'd be great school board members, but they just, the whole campaign thing is. Especially since those were their first time in the world.
Okay, um, since we have Ethan here, let's talk about, a little bit more about the maps. And I don't know if we have specific questions or just sort of general, thank you for joining us, and thanks for joining us at the board meeting on Tuesday as well. Do you want to do a quick round of introductions, or I guess maybe you met some of us there. I'm Andrew Scott, I'm the board vice chair.
Gary Hovens.
Board member.
Board member, sorry.
Ms. Anne, how about board manager?
Okay.
Karen Gashaw, is that a case to sit before?
I'm Trey, Director of Communications Department on.
Hi, good evening, I'm Liz Lawrence, Susan's District's Contract General.
Yes, good morning. I'm Ethan.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, I'm Nathan, Chair, Director of the Population Research and Joint Cancer.
I'm Born.
I'm Oscar.
I'm Jesse Moore, one of the two super representatives. Yeah, what was?
Hi, Amy, Julia from Edwards.
So, um, I guess the question, so, um, you know, it was great, thank you for going through sort of zone by zone in terms of, of how things changed. And I think this is really just an opportunity to, to maybe dig a little deeper or a couple of the unresolved questions. One, one of the questions was sort of around board member, you know, residencies. So I know we sent you some, some updated information there. And then, I, I guess, I mean, again, I did hear a whole lot of strong opinion from board members. I'll just say my own, I think it feels like there might be value in, in realigning around high school boundaries. But Julia, you, you had said earlier in this meeting, you weren't sure about that. Did I get that right? Or, actually, no, it was really interesting that the high school boundaries may change.
Well, yeah, that's our next boundary.
Right, which is sort of interesting. And, and I guess maybe that raised for me a question of how exactly, did you look at a high school catchment area and draw the lines exactly there? Or, or is there some discrepancy in order to get the right population?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad we could do this meeting today because it was a really busy board meeting, and there was a lot of topics on discussion. So, um, thanks for your patience today getting started too. The plan to align to high school attendance boundaries was based on using those, drawing along those lines as closely as possible. But it didn't result in, you know, a perfect balance when following those lines exactly. So it's more of a, in principle, that you'd be capturing, you'd be ninety, ninety-five percent aligned there in most cases. Was using that as a guideline, the same way that we would use other, other layers as a guideline, looking at defining communities of interest. I'm also, yeah, on the, on the issue of residences, so I found that it was, there was the one board member who was, was placed on that. I saw actually that, yeah, yeah. Yes, I, I appreciate your, your comment, I looked back at it and saw that we did actually go back and correctly geocoded that. And it was, I have another proposal that I'd be happy to share for that part one that was affected. I think Plan Two didn't have that effect because it followed the Madison boundary, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you want to go ahead and share?
Yeah.
That, and is, can he share his screen?
And he's a presenter.
Yes.
Great.
So, um, this is the software that I use to prototype the boundaries. If you look at the outermost boundary, it doesn't align exactly to the PPS boundary because these are census blocks. We use census blocks whenever possible for an interesting, because that's where we have the hundred percent count of the population most accurately. So the, the new thing you'll see in these, in, in this map are the, the, the flags. And those indicate the approximate locations of the residences. I know it looks like District Two, Four, that there may be an issue there, but, but the pen is actually within the District Four, just narrowly, that, that street. That's kind of the bluff there, so that would be an impractical place to live. The pen is, is not. So the modification here to Plan One, which won't be reflected in the entire suite of maps, I haven't made that update yet. But it changes the boundary between Districts Four and Five to run east-west along Alberta Street, northeast Alberta Street, and north-south along Thirty-third. So that means that the entire neighborhood of Coley and the area around, you know, Alliance High School, Front Hill Park, is all within District Five in this map. See the residences.
This would be option A, sort of a minimal modification.
Today, so if you kind of imagine taking a red pen and just changing the maps that you have in front of you to reflect this new boundary, it means that District Four comes south, I think previously ended at northeast Answorth Street. It now extends south to northeast Alberta Street. And then, and in return, it retreats toward the west to northeast Thirty-third.
Does that change the, um, composition of the disaggregated populations in a material way?
Uh, it results in a balancing counts in terms of the characteristics, I might have to run those numbers. The effect is about four thousand people that had to switch between the two districts in order to make this balance. So, you know, that's a relatively small share of the total population of the district. I'd be surprised if it was a significant change, but I haven't run those numbers yet.
Great, and I think actually we could, when you have the time, sort of, you know, run through it. Because you have provided really great disaggregated analysis on all of those. So, you know, given these updates, I think board members are going to want to see that. As well.
Yeah, we can go through that kind of again a little more slowly. Maybe I'll start then with.
This is a new version of option A.
Uh, what you'll see in the next few minutes is actually these, the, the original maps as presented. So I didn't have time to update this suite of products to reflect this change here, but actually it restores more of what this original boundary looked like. Uh, but in return for this, we have an area that, that balanced District Four. It accomplishes balance by moving, by moving the boundary, if you can make out there, this, this chunk, this stretch, yeah. Um, and so, yeah, in this map, you see the red lines represent the current boundaries of each district. District One ending here, and then the incolored lines here indicate the new boundaries. I think you should have, I'm not sure if, if, how, what I printed, I'm seeing maybe printing issues with, with that one. Detailed maps, I don't know if rendered, yours look alright, but I see some issues with that one. What I can do is load the, um, the current zones and the proposed zones on this detailed map. Where you can also see the high school boundaries.
So we, we have all the zone maps, but we're all posted. So if board members can get in the board book, then would they be looking at the change layout one or the?
Yeah, so this is kind of what you'll see in the change layout one. You'll see, this is where it has the new and old superimposed.
And this is A or B?
This is A.
Okay, so change layout A if you're in board book.
Right. So I'll focus on the changes here in the northwest because that's the only part of District One where there were significant changes. All of, all of the area south of Highway Twenty-six is added to Zone One. And there's some changes here in the area, here labeled Portland Heights. That's made in order to accommodate some of the census block boundaries for the twenty-twenty census. So by making this change, it's not really an issue of balancing the population, it's an issue of, of having certainty about our ability to count the number of people living inside the boundary by aligning with the census block.
You know, Ethan, actually, in the interest of time, I wonder if maybe we should focus on option B? Because again, I think, I think now that, now that we know on option A, we've got sort of a new change to the, to the zones up top in the north. I wonder maybe if, if, if option B, just going, going over again where some of those, because those are some significant differences. And, and kind of getting back to what you said about, you know, aligning with high school boundaries, but not, you know, not, not perfectly. Those are different, okay? And I would even suggest, I mean, if there's anything on sort of Zones One or Three, that's me and Amy, that's fine. But I know on the West Side, there just wasn't a whole lot in the, in the change.
I mean, there's a pretty dramatic difference for Zone Six in the two. And to me, like, I'll just say, like, it doesn't make, um, a lot, a lot of sense. Because I, I don't think necessarily, like, when Marshall closed, um, some of the boundaries don't necessarily make a lot of sense. And I don't think people would necessarily even, to think about the vast majority of people that want to have high school students in their households. So it's sort of like, if you say, like, my, my zone is like the front lawn zone, it's like, well, what, what is that? And I'm trying to think of how to describe it versus, like, I think the current ones is a lot easier. I don't know.
That's, that's useful feedback, I think, to explain the background on why the high schools versus any other level of school. The, the thought when I speak with my colleague, Charles Anderson, who you may know, we discussed how to capture attendance zones as a unit. And, you know, he remarked that the high school attendance zones tended to change less than when they were. So that's why we thought maybe they are inconsistent. Um, and therefore, if they were used as the basis for a district thing, that, uh, it would be that, that wouldn't be so out of sync when there are attendance changes. So, whether that's true or not, or how, to what extent that, that actually is an important factor to consider. I defer to the board and love to hear your thoughts on, you know, if attendance zones are useful at all, maybe at a different level? Maybe considering elementary zones in order to, that would give us more flexibility on how, especially Zones Six and Seven nest.
Yeah, I mean, and obviously can't speak for the, the board going forward, but like, my understanding is like, Jefferson's going to get a neighborhood boundary. And that's like not the case now, and so that would, I mean, they have dual boundaries. And then you have Benson, which is just like the citywide high school. And that, I would say, and there is the whole issue of, you know, filling Madison, I'm sorry, filling McDaniel's by, like, going south versus really, it should likely go west to pick up students versus like coming all the way over, over here. So I just, the, the other, the other thing is, I think it's, um, just, I'll speak for myself, I think it would be healthier for me to feel like I had some people like, hey, you're not, I mean, I'm getting a little bit of this right now in the Southeast Carolina coalition, like, you are representative, you need to do X. Versus if you have two groups, like, I represent more than one high school boundary, and I know that we represent all the high schools. But, I mean, people feel like if you live in their zone, you shouldn't represent them. So I think there's some value of having more than one high school.
Do we know how the zones originally, what, what the rationale was for the, the sort of current zones?
Yeah, I don't know to what extent, they were based on the zones, came before them. The analysts who did this registering stuff in, I think, in twenty-twelve, uh, is not at the PRC anymore. So I have all of the technical materials, but I don't have background on what were the discussions. You know, the record discussions like we're having right now, transfers from how the conversation went, I, those I don't, I don't know.
And my understanding is the changes were pretty minimal back then.
So it'll be more of a Plan A scenario.
Right, and so, so, right, and then, so it's all been iterative for maybe decades, right?
Right.
It's just sort of curious, because I mean, the West Side makes sense, just geographically, it makes sense. Although the, the Sawwoods piece didn't, I'm assuming the Sawwood piece was added because they needed population. But, I mean, I got to tell you, when I, I had no idea that Sawwood, what I declared was a, in a zone. It was just strange, you know, like, to sort of find that out. I mean, Julia, it's an interesting point, and I, I also sort of, it's interesting to think about from a public perspective. I agree with you that most people don't have high school kids. I think most people know their high school catchment area, but maybe not. Ethan, how many people in the city, how many households have children? Is it like thirty percent?
I'll just pull that up to see, yeah.
I'm pretty sure it's like eighteen because Beaverton is, I think, twenty-five.
Okay.
Ours is like one of the lowest.
It's always lower than I think it is, so I thought thirty was low, eighteen is even lower. And, and so that's interesting too, because we often think about families with kids, families with kids, families with kids, but the vast majority of our constituents don't have children.
At the time of the schools.
Right. And so for them, actually, what school catchment area they're in may not be relevant at all.
Well, I can feel any reason then, it would still be viable to consider them, would be just the language of the statute, which does suggest when feasible, that attendance zones are considered when drawn to districts. So that was the other motivation. You know, there's no requirement that, that they be drawn that way, but it, that, they do elevate that as defining, you know, communities of interest.
Yeah, but that's important, I, I had, I'm not sure I ever learned it, but I had forgotten it if I had, so.
That's interesting, because to me, that seems contrary to maybe this whole, um, we're trying to get rid of vestiges of discrimination. Because high school boundaries are very much vestiges. So, you know, there, there's a reason why, you know, Roosevelt, like, even though the students in, on the West Side that are closer to St. John's, go to Lincoln instead of Roosevelt's. It's just like, I can make a pitch, I'll just say, like, for Zone Seven right now, you're going to get some of the, um, lowest incomes of codes and some of the highest ones.
You're saying current?
If, if, right, well, the, okay, option A. And if you do it by, um, high school, then it becomes a lot less so. The same thing, um, in that, so.
You didn't do an economic analysis, right? You did a racial analysis, and it was, I, I didn't, I looked at my zone for that. Was the, was sort of the, the, um, the racial breakdown significantly different between options?
They are for a couple of districts, yeah, but they, they are, yeah, so that, those are included. For those who have the, the report, those are included in the last couple pages of the, their report as a breakdown with race ethnicity. You know, I think on those tables, it's important to mention that this is just one way of looking at race ethnicity. There are numerous ones, and I think there was a, a comment from the board, um, last meeting, uh, uh, questioning the accuracy of the race ethnicity definite, or, or results of the census. Yeah, and I, I thought about that remark, and I think that part of the expression of inaccuracy that may be present in these tables could be the fact that they present them in the federal standards for the combined figure for two or more races. So everyone who would have checked more than one race box will be not included with the races that they checked, but with the two or more races. So an alternative ways of getting to that would be. So an alternative ways of getting to that would be.
And you get a lot of that in.
A law or in combination.
You get a lot of that up in the Collie neighborhood too. You get, you get a lot of low-income race families that does that. So when I look at that, when you look at about 4,000, 800, and when you look at the other one, the Pacific, so quite a significant difference.
That's right. And I think some of this socioeconomic research does show that younger people especially too are more willing to kind of be inclusive about checking a lot of their backgrounds rather than picking one. So that's one thing I can think we can also address in future iterations of the report. I think that hesitancy in using the alone or in combination definition is that it adds up to more than the population. So when it's really important to balance the population, we can't, we can't use that. But it occurred to me that there's another system that's used. You know, some of the state agencies we've worked with use a system called the rarest race method, where people who identify as two or more races are assigned a single or counted once with one race, which represents the least populous of the populations by race. So if it was someone, for example, who checked white and black, because in this area, there are fewer people who identify as black than identify as white, they would be counted with black once and only once, not with both black and white, or with just two or more races. And I have that as they are. So that's something I'd before too, as in a future iteration, you know, we can count it both ways. We can switch to counting it that way. I think that, you know, most folks I've spoken to prefer that to having two or more races counted separately.
Just to be clear, this is different ways of parsing the demographic data for these zones, right? You're just saying there's different methodologies to sort of see what the impact is. They might tell slightly different stories.
Is there income in there? I didn't see that.
No, so income is not part of the 2020 Census. It is part of another survey called the American Community Survey, the ACS, so we could look to it. One of the challenges is that the areas at which we can look at income data don't, they're not down to the census block.
Like Zip Code, what I said, Zip Code.
You could have Zip Code, you could have for tracts. And so a lot of those will be split across multiple board members. So it can be done, but it's a bit of an effort. And I think once, it'd be worth undertaking, once we have a little more confidence in which direction we want to go, then we can maybe start to think about some adding some of those numbers in. The other thing that will happen in March is that we will get data from the 2020 five year ACS. And that will be in the same geographic units as the 2020 Census data currently. That's the other problem, that the ACS is running off of census tracts and block groups that don't reflect changes that were made in the 2020 Census. So that makes my cure the full to use.
I'm just, you know, I'm sort of getting, we don't have poverty data, we do have race data. And you're right, I hadn't, again, I hadn't looked in detail through all of this. You know, Julia, the, you know, Zone Seven, under Plan A. Well, under Plan B, you know, actually gains about 5,000 white households, you know, residents. And then loses, you know, it becomes less diverse as a result, but other districts, other zones change significantly. Was there any takeaway from your perspective between Option A and B?
I did note that in Plan B, there were more districts that had a higher than, just a quite average percentage of BIPOC residents. So that that was an important consideration, given, you know, some of the comments from the board about differences from zones not large. But zones, some zones do have the function of kind of magnifying.
Sorry, statistically, walk me through that. More, more of our zones have a higher percentage of BIPOC people living in them, but that must mean the other zones have lower.
Plus, that's right.
Okay. So just make sure, because we're all above average, right? Yeah.
So that was under Plan B, the plan which aligns the high schools, you know, maybe, maybe due to some of the comments, you know, the legacies of the high school boundaries and the way that they were drawn. They do change the demographic makeup, and they do concentrate people by race and ethnicity more so than planning.
Yeah. It's a little after six, I want to respect for this time, particularly staff tonight. I'm curious, you and Julia, from your perspective, what's, what is criteria that we can think about in terms of making this decision? Well, and I want to be clear, making the recommendation to the board, so the board can make a decision about which direction to go. I can think of some, but I mean, just thinking like, like, what are some criteria we should be thinking of as we sort of analyze?
Well, I think diversity of the, of the zone, I mean, it's interesting, because one, like, Zone Seven from eight, from one to two becomes way less diverse, I mean, just, no, it becomes, it becomes less diverse, and five becomes
Significantly more.
Significantly more. So, you know, I think it's like the diversity. And I think maybe if we think about what we think we might be, what we might be doing with high school boundaries, like, if that weighs into it, I mean, like, are we, you know, how, how is, for example, the Jefferson community going to feel if they, if we do it by high school boundaries and we're doing it because Jefferson doesn't have a neighborhood boundary, or I don't know, maybe use the and roll the boundary of Jefferson?
Yeah, we can see how that looks in Plan B.
So it does result in kind of a split, you know, like you were mentioning. So we have the three, three split zones for Jefferson, and two, they each end up in a different zone in Plan B. So one is in four, one is in five, and one is in two. So if those do, were, if those were combined into a neighborhood boundary, you would have an issue right there, yeah.
I guess also the key, like, maybe another thing is I think about, like, what communities of interest do we have? So like, outer outer southeast, by Zip Code, there is a much larger sort of Asian population, it's like, are we splitting communities of interest? And it may not matter if we continue to be elect citywide, but it would matter if we ever switch to vote by zone.
Well, and you just raised a really great question, which is that how much, if we're staying with that large voting, how much feels like it matters a little bit less, right? Now you're just talking about where you live and where you run.
And I'll say for myself, just thinking about students that go to Jefferson.
Oh, you're going to say which district you were going to run it.
Few years to prepare. But thinking about Jefferson, about, you know, demographics of Jefferson and saying, we're going to kind of build our districts in an environment where, where before, we know what zone, or we can create a zone that encapsulates the community. I think it, for me, it's hard to say, let's go along with this if we separate, you know, it feels like we're just separating Jefferson into three different, into, you know, three different districts, which is hard for me to say, it would be hard for me to say, let's do that and like, separate a lot of the Jefferson community. And I know, you know, the neighborhoods may not be as diverse as they used to be, but just, you know, remembering, you know, centering BIPOC voices, especially in that building.
Let me ask, I'm not sure if I heard you right on Jefferson. So Plan B follows generally the high school boundaries, but it doesn't for Jefferson, because Jefferson currently does not have a single, everybody has a dual option.
That's right, and it is currently split between districts two and four, with a little bit in five. Oh, zones, I keep saying districts, sorry. Yeah, two and four with a little bit of two and five. And I think that that, yeah, that would continue to be the case in both plans. But it would really follow the splits, the attendance boundaries in Zone B.
But it does that currently in our current zones as well?
Uh, yes, yeah, they don't, the, the attendance zones are split.
Right.
So I would just suggest if we go, if the philosophy is around high school boundaries, that we think about Jefferson having a, having a neighborhood boundary?
So I'm curious, is Addison air, you can run a model, you can run, adding that in? It feels like it adds a lot of complexity, but you've done a lot of complex things here, so I trust maybe you can do it.
Right, it matters how far along your thinking is in terms of what that neighborhood boundary would look like. I mean, I think if you're far the majority of the way there, and there were minor changes that would, you know, disrupt the plan. If you have a sense of what that boundary would look like, it would look like the combination of three or some combination of the two or, or, you know, the picture of it that looked like, yes, I could add that to, I could, same way that I changed Plan A to reflect the, and keep the Collie neighborhood together, I could change your Plan B to try and reflect thinking, the board's thinking on a Jefferson community.
We already have a Jefferson boundary, it's just people who choose to go like Jeff or Roosevelt or Jeff or.
So the problem, so when you looked at Roosevelt, you included, well, actually.
The dual of them.
No, because you.
So Roosevelt, we could not combine, if Jefferson includes all of the dual choice zones, then Roosevelt and Jefferson together would be too populous. So those two zones couldn't go in their entirety together.
So you, so you can do it, but you need us to tell you where, where that potential boundary.
Yeah, and that would matter how many people were in that potential community boundary, because I think with the population numbers that are in the Graham-Jefferson, Madison-Jefferson, and Roosevelt-Jefferson areas, if those were all combined into one area for Jefferson, that would make it one of the largest, and I'm sure maybe even the largest, that would be a very large, so that'd be a lot of students for Jefferson. So I assume that there's some nuance thinking on that about, you know, where, what areas might be ceded to the other high schools.
Yeah, I don't think we're far enough along.
I think there's very nuanced, you know, information.
Because we haven't even, yeah, we haven't even talked about it in the census. Well, and let me ask it a different way then. If, if we still are keeping on the table, you know, sort of talking to the community, potential bigger changes later, does that lead us towards Option A, which is just the changes we need to make legally? And then if a decision is made to go to a different type of voting system in the future, we could also redraw these. We can redraw these at any time, right? We're required to do it every 10 years, but we could redraw these two years, three years.
So we could redraw after we continue.
We can redraw it after Jefferson, if there are changes made there in terms of.
And what's the timeline for that for our high school, they don't have a concrete.
When we want to do the high school boundaries? Well, my guess is when we open Jeff, that that would be the natural time to do it. I mean, it. I mean, it sounds like as soon as we ever get the Southeast Guiding Coalition done, that's the next phase. I think it would be complicated, I think it would be a hard conversation with the community, with some members of the community to say, we're going for high school boundaries, except for the one high school that's in three parts, says Jefferson. So I don't know if there's, it sounds like you can't just do an easy, make Jefferson a zone, think it's going to be too large. But I wonder if there's something that's not three? That's, that is not three, like dividing them in three zones.
Well, I guess I'm, do we even need this, I mean, if.
If you're, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of thinking about this as, as we, well, here, 612, so let's begin to wrap up. What I'm wondering is, so I think we need to go back and talk about criteria. And I want to just loop back with staff, because I know they, they provided some of this to me in terms of what's the statutory criteria. And then I think we can, and I don't think it needs to be complicated or long, but just thinking about, you know, what are the, what are the five or six things we are keeping in mind as we go through this process? And, and then I think it's scoping out, what are the medium and long-term changes and what are the timelines around that? I'm sort of headed towards a place that says, you know, given these complexities around Jefferson, given these complexities you're raising about, you know, you know, significant changes in the zones, you know, if we're not changing the way we're voting, going forward with Option A, bringing that back to the board in the next couple of months, just to get, you know, board approval on it, getting that done, and then starting up this, this longer term conversation.
And you always could go to option, modifying the option B anytime in the future, because we're not prevented from doing it, it's just required from doing it.
Exactly, and I'm thinking that's a pretty easy conversation now, and similar to when we had 10 years ago. We're basically letting the district know, we're updating, I mean, our residents know, constituents, we're updating based on population. We're not making any.
Rebalancing.
Right, we rebalance, which I think will be sort of like, sure, like, okay, good, good for you. Versus even if, you know, these high school zones, I mean, you know, who knows who's been thinking about running for the school board, who may all of a sudden be in a different, you know, zone, and, you know, that could surprise a lot of people, so. How does that sound? So we'll do just a little bit of work, because I think we've got a meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, it's going to be argued every two Mondays.
Although it's a little less important if we're not doing big changes. So we can even argue three weeks from now.
How many weeks will now be spring break?
Yeah, two, two weeks, fine, for books. Do a little bit of work on criteria, think about this a little bit more. We have regular work meeting on 15?
Yes.
With on accountability, do you either read that? And that was at 5:30?
Which I agree on, Andrew.
Uh, the 14th, so. Did you want to do a 4:30? That would work for you? I'm going to be, two long minutes of meeting there.
I'm like that in Congress.
4:30.
Great, works for me. Does it work? Yeah, okay. Perfect.
Okay, so the questions for me, and I can focus on updating Plan A to reflect the changes to some, oh, you never had. Any thoughts on the tabulation of race ethnicity on options, alternative options? Would like to see in a future iteration of the report or other contents? Would we like to see in our report, socioeconomic are floated, that's an important thing. I think once we have Plan A or B decided, I can invest all the time and see what's possible for that.
I think I'm hearing interest in the socioeconomic data.
Yes, it's, and like I just said, maybe at a high level, I think it's.
I, I mean, I guess I might defer to you on the, on the, on the racial data. I mean, I guess I would say, how, how easy is it to run it a couple of different ways? I mean, you're essentially just looking at two different data sources, and then you can sort of compare to see if it tells a different story significantly, right? How, how, how easy is that to do?
It's just as easy to tabulate it one way as, as the other, we've got all the infrastructure in place for that.
And I guess what I'm wondering, can you tabulate it both ways, right?
Yeah, we can.
Can we get some of you? Are you four or five?
I think there would be interested in seeing that, given, given, given our chair's question at the last meeting, and, yeah.
Okay, I'll make those additions.
That would be great, yeah, and then, and then, yeah, making that change that we talked about.
So the way you're thinking about it, Andrew, is sort of like this phased process, and we take, we do the required work first, believing in the possibility that you could do these others if you have other conversations. But we get that done and set it up, so that if you want to do something different, you have a foundation to do it.
Yes, and I think then that second conversation is a combination of the way we go, campaign finance, voting age, other, you know, be a lot in that, or something. But I have some time to really, again, and then really figure out also, who do we want to be? I mean, what I would love to see is a task force that involves, that has community members on it, right? So some who are the key. So some, who are the key stakeholders in this field, in this area, who have strong opinions, and how to get them at the table for a more extended process. Okay?
Do you like Ethan to come back in two weeks?
I don't.
Well. Yeah, actually, so, so maybe, yes. That would be great. Good, thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming today, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, not at all, that's great, so, any other questions from board member, Mr. Staff? Thanks for your time, everybody.